Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. I'm Mark Conway, Chair of the Committee and Representative of the 4th District. Today we'll have a hearing for Bill 24-0584 Baltimore City Government Entities Language Access and we'll have a hearing for LO 22-0030 Crime Reduction and Violence Prevention. In attendance today, we have of the committee, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, Councilman Burnett of the 8th District, Councilwoman Porter of the 10th District and Councilwoman Ramos of the 14th District. From the President's Office, we have Preston Lewis in the back here and representing the Mayor's Office, we have Tyler Shanella. We will jump into it. Forgive me for the mistake. This is Bill 24-0584 Baltimore City Government Entities Language Access for the purpose of requiring a certain Baltimore government entity to appoint a language access liaison and adopt a language access plan requiring a Baltimore government entity to provide language access services to specified individuals, establishing certain reporting requirements, defining certain terms, providing for a special effective date and generally relating to the provision of language access services by Baltimore government entities. This bill was introduced on September 16th, 2024 and sponsored by Councilwoman Ramos. We have a number of amendments here today and I will hand it off to Councilwoman Ramos to walk us through the amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This bill was sponsored by myself and the administration through the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs. This bill again just solidifies the practice that we're already starting to make sure that anyone, no matter what language they speak, has access to city services. And so last hearing, we did go over these amendments. These are the same ones that we went over last meeting from the Law Department. They were introduced by the Law Department and one amendment by the Health Department. The Health Department saying, you know, they already have requirements from the federal government around translation of documents and language access, so our requirements would just be relevant to the city policies and city documents for the Health Department. Well, actually for all the agencies. And the Law Department's amendments were mostly clarification amendments. And so I think that we also, I will say if I may, Mr. Chair, we did have the Commission on Disabilities request some amendments to be including American Sign Language and other ways for our deaf, hard of hearing and blind residents to be able to have access to city services. We have agreed, and I wanted to just put in the record, that we would provide and work with the administration on a separate bill because language access for people with disabilities is very different than spoken language access and we want to be strategic and thorough and make sure that we get it right. So we have committed to that. I'm committing to that. The Mayor's Office is committed, so we will make sure that that's one of the first things on our agenda in the new term is to make sure not just anybody with spoken language, but anybody who needs to have access in various ways will be able to have access to city services. And I said in an email, but I will say publicly that I apologize to the disability community that we have not done that as a city before and it absolutely has to get done. I want to do it right and so we're not going to include it in this bill, but we will make sure that there's another initiative early in the process in the new term, which starts in a couple of weeks, few weeks to get this done. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to add that.
Did we need to go through in any detail any of the amendments that were not discussed at the last?
All the amendments that we have before us were discussed in the last.
Okay, perfect. Any questions about the amendments that were provided in the packet?
I just want to clarify, Mr. Leavitt, we have the amendments before us, the most recent set because there was a typo from, okay, so then we have the most recent set. Great, thank you.
All right. Anything from the administration otherwise?
No, Mr. Chair.
Excellent, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept the amendments.
Move the amendments.
Moved by Ramos, seconded by Burnett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we've accepted the amendments. I'll entertain a motion to move the bill.
Second?
Excuse me, to move the bill as amended. I've got Porter with the motion and Ramos with the second. Conway, yes. Porter.
Yes.
Burnett.
Yes.
And Ramos.
Yes.
All right, this bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. That allows us to move on to the major reason why we're here today. This is for Bill LO 22-0030 Crime Reduction and Violence Prevention for the purpose of the committee holding regular hearings with the Police Department, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement and other agencies to monitor the progress of the city's crime reduction and violence prevention efforts. This bill was introduced in September of 2024. Excuse me, it was introduced by myself. This is an LO that we frequently hold and this will be our last hearing for the year. So typically we hold this at the end of every year in order to talk through what has happened and what we see as opportunities for the coming year, what our focus will be. And so excited to have everyone here today to talk about some of the significant progress that we've made and also think about some of the opportunities that we have to address in front of us. So with that, I believe both the Police Department and MONC have a presentation that they've worked on together. What we're going to do is we're going to allow both the Police Department and MONC to do their presentation and have questions at the end. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the Commissioner.
Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon, council members. I'm going to be really brief. I'm going to go through our slide presentation, some of the highlights for the year. Basically, the first one is going to have our clearance rates. As you can see, the homicide clearance rate is significantly higher as well as the shooting clearance rates from last year. I attribute that to the hard work of the men and women and the command that has taken over those areas. Clearance rate in rapes is a little bit lower, but there's some different things that has to do with that class that makes that a little more difficult. Robberies, we have this year's burglaries, we have this year's ag assaults. Last year, as you know, we were transitioning to a new records management system so we can compare it to the national average, which you see robberies are above, ag assaults are a little bit above, but burglaries are significantly higher than they are for the national average as well as arson. That goes to the hard work of the men and women in those detective divisions because they're working extremely short, as is the rest of the department. And we move on to the arrests. The narcotics arrests this year are down slightly, only a couple cases. Handgun violations, which we've been trailing last year for almost the entire year and we've actually just recently, we've run above last year's numbers. These numbers are from 11-5. See robbery arrests are significantly higher. That goes back to something else we'll talk about later on in the slide, which is most likely the juveniles, attempted murder, and then the amount of murder arrests that we've had so far in 2024. Next slide will go to the gun-related arrests. As you can see, the Central is leading the way as they did last year. They, 238 gun arrests in the Central District this year. They led last year at 218. The difference this year a little bit is the Western. They've had 192, so they've also had some violence, so it's been a little bit of a battle over there, but they're doing exceptionally well. The non-patrol arrests is where we made up a lot of progress and a lot of that is the group violence unit. And we can move on to homicides by district. Highest district is going to be the Western this year, they're at 31, where they were at 32 total last year. The big difference is going to be you'll see the Northeast at 33 to 12, the Southern at 33 to 17. And Western seems to be the only one that has struggled a little bit and we've known that they struggle. We kind of, we didn't really expect, I don't want to say we expected it, but we knew when we did redistricting, judging from the first part, the last part of the year, last year, we knew with them taking over some new areas, it was going to be a little more difficult. And then shootings, they're also leading the way with shootings, same reason, they had 69 this year compared to 78 last year. Then we go on to robberies by district. The Central was really leading, they still are leading, but they were significantly higher over the last 28 days, probably the last six weeks. The Central District Commander, Major Sincheck, and the Captain Adams have put together a robbery plan that has worked exceptionally well over the last 28 and 44 weeks, four or five weeks. They've decreased their robberies where they're actually down significantly over the last several weeks, which has a huge impact because a lot of those robberies were juveniles downtown. Now you move on to the domestic and youth violence where you'll see the huge win is with the homicides and shooting victims that are youth. 17% down, almost 18% in the homicides and almost 60% in non-fatal shootings. They are up in robberies where our young people are still committing robberies on other young people. That's something we've been battling all year. And then next slide is going to show one of the biggest increases and one of the things that we promised last year would happen and has come true is the fact that if you look at the red area, which is the foot patrol, the amount of foot patrol that our officers have walked this year is probably about three times as much as we did last year. Traffic stops are still up, business checks are up, so almost everything we've done this year is up from last year. But the foot patrol is the biggest increase. Now we move to something that we don't really talk about a lot and it's with the assessment through the consent decree. And this is something that we're really proud of because we've shown that we can not only decrease crime, but we can also reform a police department. We're in full and effective compliance with five sections of the decree, First Amendment, Transport, Health and Wellness, School Police and Community Oversight Task Force. The monitoring team has several other assessments ready for review within the next six months, such as use of force and stop searches and arrests. But this shows you that 43% of the paragraphs are on track and another 30% is an initial compliance. So we knew once we started satisfying some of these, they would go through relatively quickly and my goal is by the time my contract runs out or it expires, I want to be satisfied the consent decree completely. And then the next slide, this one can be a little confusing. It takes some time to read. I'm not going to, I'll explain a little bit, but you can look at it a little bit more in depth. The red area shows that aren't assessed yet. The good area, the area that you're going to see some improvement is with community policing and Deputy Chief Sarah Ritter will talk about that a little bit more later in the presentation. And then the last slide for me is going to be, is going to show basically the progress that we've made with the consent decree, which I'm extremely happy and proud of because we were not really satisfying anything and once we started moving forward, especially with the community policing, with the reorganization and the new people in new places, I think we're moving forward and I'm confident and hopefully we can be out satisfied at consent decree by the end of next year. With that, I will turn the presentation over to Deputy Chief Lisa Reynolds to talk about juveniles. Lisa came to us from Department of Juvenile Services and she has done a fabulous job with reorganizing the way we handle juveniles and she's been a tremendous help to our officers and one of the main reasons why we've had success with juvenile enforcement over the last six months. Lisa?
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Commissioner. So the slide here is showing juvenile arrests for 23 and 24. These are all arrests under the age of 18 and under, whether they're charged as adult or as juvenile. These show for us the cases that are diverted, the cases that are paper referred, as well as the cases that are brought to juvenile booking. I will say that, you know, with MONC support, we'll be probably seeing a lot, big increase this calendar year on our diversion cases. In terms of what is coming down at booking, we have seen a little bit of a change for the cases as the Commissioner mentioned. Robberies are up. They were about 10% of our cases last year and they're about 26% of our cases this year. So that has definitely increased. Next slide here. Some of the highlights, just to let you all know, we're doing just a better job of an all of tracking what is happening down with juveniles as well as what's down at booking. One of the big things is a lot of youth are brought for requests for review of detention. So we are now making sure that we are tracking what DJS is making as their decision, whether it is to release, to put on an ATD or to detain. One of the issues that we had noticed early on over the summer was a lot of our robbery cases were getting released. Since then, we have been tracking with DJS shift in policy to make sure that we, letting the districts know when the youth are coming out on monitoring so that they are aware. Those youth then not only go to court the next day, but then go to court in 14 days. So we believe that's also that constant follow-up is supporting some of the efforts for youth not recidivating quickly in terms of the robbery cases. Another thing that we're doing is developing a youth dashboard that we're pretty excited about. We met about it today. That dashboard will really satisfy a lot of the things in the consent decree related to youth, but in addition is going to be able to allow us to track recidivism, to track victims, to track schools, to know where the kids are coming from. Not only are they committing the crimes at schools, but also where there's issues with retaliation. In addition, we'll be entering all the sins outcomes as well as the paper referrals. And why that is helpful is, like I said, we'll now be able to know what happened with the case. Did it, wasn't made in the timely manner per the statute and what that outcome was.
Lisa, I want to pause you for a second. We don't have the slides. We're waiting for them to come in and there are graphics that I think would help folks interpret what you're saying. We can't hear you on there.
We have a 20 slide deck, so this is correct. We're missing the ones that are at the very end, so we will reemail them, I suppose.
Okay. So for, to make sure that the committee is fully briefed, I just want to make sure we get those up. So Lisa, we could hold off on your part before, so what we have still ends, it looks like, at the same place with the assessment graphs for the consent decree process. How about this, we're going to take a two-minute recess and then we'll figure it out. All right? All right, I'm going to bring back the committee. Thank you for working that out. We now have the correct slideshow up, so Lisa, you can continue on the juvenile.
Thank you. I'll pick up where I left off about, you know, why the dashboard isn't so important with the youth that are coming down to booking, the youth that are being paper referred, et cetera. There's a lot of valuable information, so it's not just about the arrest. It's also about where we can intervene with services and support and where we can connect with agencies. So in doing that and having a youth dashboard, that will really facilitate all of this, not just the demographics and the arrest history, but like I said, if we can record victim information, if we can capture recidivism information, we'll be able to better understand, you know, where those services and supports are needed. To do that, of course, we need to have valid information going in. So one of the things that we're going to be doing is utilizing the booking team to really help streamline this for the districts, to take that paper process away from them. Once the incident is submitted, they take it from there, get it where it needs to go, enter the outcomes, whether it's diversion, paper referral, or detention decisions, and enter that and then let the districts know actually what's happening with those cases. In addition, obviously is the staffing at booking, so ensuring the staff are trained, looking at different models and working with our training unit surrounding positive youth development, just to make sure that they are, you know, able in, when there are interactions with youth that we're actually following best practice models. The space at booking is one that's been ignored, I think, since the building's been built. It's a jail and these are still youths that we're bringing down there, so we're working with Center for Hope as well as our own internal staff coming on down and just navigating the space. We are in a DJS building, it's a state building, so we obviously have to work with them for anything. Simple things as painting, but others as well as the furniture. We're the only law enforcement agency in the state that has this cells for these youths, so we're really trying to figure out how we could make it youth-focused, youth-friendly. We understand there's a point why the youths are there. It's a small point in the process. The victims and the accountability and all of that can occur as this, you know, goes through the court system, but while they're there, we want to treat them still humanely and make sure that, you know, that their needs are met. Lastly is the warrant and apprehension requests. We get these from DJS weekly, so we're working there to make sure that the dissemination to the districts is going out, that pictures are included. We anticipate this to increase based on the new law with the fact that youth on monitoring, those will be reported to the court when they're in violation and if that's true and that requires apprehension, that's a workload matter for the department. So we've also incorporated a mechanism where we have pictures from booking. If DJS doesn't supply the picture, we're going to make sure that the districts get those. And that is all for mine.
My name is Sarah Ritter. I am the Deputy Chief of BPD's Community Policing Section. As we've discussed here previously and as the consent decree monitoring team continues to emphasize in their assessments, as the slide says, all BPD members have a role in community policing. What this diagram shows is that balance of my team, the community policing section, acting as a hub for community policing partnerships and resources so that we can help filter into supporting all aspects of BPD operations. As some examples, it's, I apologize for the small type, but one of the bubbles says Administrative Bureau and within there, we've been working with our recruitment section on different ways we can partner at local events to improve local hiring and engagement through that recruitment process. We're also working through the Investigative Bureau as it relates to the GVRS Neighborhood Stabilization Strategies following a large enforcement event and how we can integrate some of our community resources there. So to make clear, our Community Policing Section is not meant to be a huge standalone entity, but a connector and a force multiplier. This is an intentional approach meant to efficiently use BPD staffing and resources while also recognizing our city and community partners face similar resource restraints. Are we okay to keep going? Okay. So functionally, what does that look like in terms of the activities of our Community Policing Section? Broadly, you can group our activities into three buckets: interagency coordination, training, and program development. To support those activity areas, we've been making strategic investments in some of our staffing resources, which is that fourth square there. The positions we are hiring are all professional staff that can work hand-in-hand with our sworn members. So first, our Victim Services is now at a total of 22 members, which has allowed them to cover an expanded number of crime types and respond in real-time to homicide cases. Director Rose is here with us today and she oversees that entire unit. For the other half of the section, the Community Partnership Team, we have just onboarded a data coordinator who will help expand some of the data you'll see around proactivity, understanding more deeply what's happening at business checks, foot patrols. So we're really glad to have her onboard as a, bringing some of our data further around community policing. We are also onboarding a coordinator who will support district engagement efforts in the Central, Southeast, and Eastern districts. And with that position, we'll have coordinators assigned citywide who help the districts to build partnerships and identify resources and needs. So they're sort of that force multiplier to our neighborhood coordination officers. And last, in terms of staffing, we've brought Deputy Director Amanda Crocky to oversee volunteer and education programs. She will oversee our chaplains, auxiliary, special liaisons, and mounted unit. Many of you likely know Deputy Director Crocky from her last position with PIO, so we're excited to have her bring her communication skills to broaden the impact of these different volunteer and education programs. And Amanda is here with us today as well. So with this staffing, to that end, the investment is allowing us to build out several different programmatic pieces. That's the program development section you see on this slide. First, a special liaisons unit that will help provide specific engagement points for key populations such as seniors, neurodivergent, LGBTQIA, immigrant populations, and deaf and hard of hearing. Next, our expanded victim services team allows for expanded service coverage, I already spoke about, as well as expanding our witness relocation capacity as that unit also sits within our victim services unit. And last, this expanded staffing will help us to focus on expanding our auxiliary and junior cadet program. The next set of activities we support are different trainings. Sorry, we're still, it's a lot on this slide, I apologize. Different trainings that bring, and that's the top right box, it brings community members and BPD together. So currently, the first one, chaplains training, we have an active cohort. It's an eight-week program where volunteer members can come in to be trained as chaplains where they get topic, get classes on topics ranging from constitutional policing, BPD Operations and Investigations, Ethics and Diversity, Behavioral Health and Public Integrity Bureau, and several other topics across that eight-week program. The next training, Safe Growth, is also in process right now. It creates a framework for community police and city agencies to work together on public safety projects. As a little pitch, final presentations are happening next week at the BPD Academy and open to the public. We'd welcome everyone to come in and see those final presentations as part of that training. And the last set of trainings, we work with a range of city partners as they have different priorities and training that intersect with BPD. So two that we have currently been partnering with are the Office of Equity and Civil Rights and LGBTQ Affairs. And then the last bucket on this slide is around interagency coordination. We continue to use the 311 system as a way for our officers to identify areas of concern during their daily patrols. And we're also working on a weekly basis with the City Administrator's Office to coordinate efforts in areas of priority public safety concern. So this has been hugely valuable for BPD to address many of the underlying conditions that are leading to crime, our problem-oriented policing approaches. And we, I believe, I won't speak for other agencies, but I think it's also been really helpful for them as we work together on some of these more complex issues that also are requiring their teams to go back to the same places over and over and over again. So it's been a very valuable partnership in that way with that weekly meeting cycle with the City Administrator's Office. And I would be remiss to not mention, MONC has also been a key partner in organizing a lot of these responses, bringing a lot of necessary resources to high priority areas. I know they'll speak further on some of those additional programs. And with that, I will conclude, but hand it back over to the Commissioner for some final BPD points.
Yeah, and just, thank you. Just to give you an update where we are as of today, homicides, we are 55 down compared to last year, 24% less, 175 victims this year compared to 230. Non-fatal shootings are 193 less victims, which is 34%, 561 compared to just 368 this year. And one of the things that I'm most proud of is we've done this with less than 2,000 cops, which is the first time in my 27 years that we've been under 2,000 and probably the first we had several years ago. The good news is, we just started a class that was at capacity, which has 30-some BPD members, and it's to the point now, we're going to have to limit the amount of outside agencies we can allow in there, our recruitment classes, because we're starting to get more and more BPD members. And one of the most significant things that's happened over the last month is that the Mayor, the Mayor's Office and the FOP agreed to a contract that is probably going to keep a lot of our experienced officers here. So they stepped up, the Mayor stepped up, and did a good job, basically, coming to an agreement that allows us to probably slow down the attrition rate and even bring back some people. There are several people in background that are willing to come back, that want to come back because of the way the department has and the new contract. So a lot of things going well, and I'm extremely proud of the men and women of the BPD to go out, go out there and do it every single day with significant staffing shortages. So thank you.
All right. Should we jump right into it? Thank you all. Stephanie Mavronis, Director at MONZI, and we're here to share our year-end presentation. We'll provide an overview, kind of where we are today, talk about our programmatic highlights from the year. We'll spend the latter half of our presentation on GVRS stat and updates, and then talk a little bit about the institutionalization of the work, particularly for our agency, and then we'll open it up to questions. All right. So this slide just showcases, as we've grown and developed as an agency, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement plays two core roles. One is in the realm of coordination and inter-agency accountability. The other is in direct services and partnerships. So the four main buckets of our work as we head into 2025, Community Violence Intervention, or CBI, the Group Violence Reduction Strategy, or GVRS, Victim Services, and Community Engagement and Opportunity. And so just to show how we've built out this work, in the four lanes of the work that we mentioned, MONZI's role has really been to build out this ecosystem of programs that span prevention, intervention, rehabilitation, and reentry. Much of our work is in partnership with our partners and law enforcement, and so really making sure we have that wraparound approach. But this showcases, as we close out the year, some of that landscape that we've really helped to build out. Earlier this year, I believe in May, we released the biennial update of Baltimore's Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan. This is the city's five-year comprehensive public safety strategy. This slide shows where we are from an implementation status perspective of all of the recommendations, action items that fall within that plan. So you can see that around 37% of those items have been completed to date in that five-year plan. We have five items that are in the pre-implementation phase right now, and then the bulk of our items, 56% are in progress. And again, this plan can be found on our website. And so I won't belabor the point, but you can see we've been really intentional in how we've built up from the foundation up, starting early with our pilot in the Western District for GVRS, growing our Community Violence Intervention ecosystem, reconstituting the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, beginning Neighborhood Stabilization Responses, partnering with BPD on neighborhood policing plans, and really in this year, where we are today, doing the work to prepare for expansion of GVRS to the Southern District, launching this school year, School-Based Violence Intervention, in four of our high schools, and continuing to do the work of sustaining our agency for the long haul, which I'll talk about in just a few slides. So some of our top-line accomplishments, this is by no means an exhaustive list, just wanted to shout out a few of the things that we're proud to share this year. As I mentioned, we launched School-Based Violence Intervention in four schools. As of the 7th, there have been 1,095 mediations that our Safe Streets staff have conducted. We've celebrated six of our Safe Streets sites this year, reaching 365 days-plus with no homicides in their catchment zones. I have the metric up there, Safe Streets has hosted 273 community events year-to-date. In our Victim Services lane, our team has assisted over 364 primary and secondary victims, and additionally, 127 victims served through the Visitation Center, which falls within our portfolio. And then in our Community Engagement lane, we've activated 16 coordinated Neighborhood Stabilization Responses this year. We have launched this year's Safe Return Planning in partnership with the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services. 78 Safe Return Plans for folks returning home to Baltimore City have been developed year-to-date, and we're looking forward to continuing to grow those efforts. And then have had 148 participants in our Returning Citizens Behind the Wall Initiative. So I'll jump now into GVRS, so we can talk a little bit about what the data looks like and how we're working to sustain the strategy. And I'll also invite our GVRS Chief, Terrence, to jump in as well, if need be. This table right here, you'll notice in the bottom left-hand corner, the data goes back to when we launched GVRS in January 2022 in the Western. So you can see the breakdown in direct communication referrals, as well as the direct communications we've delivered since the start of the strategy. So we've, we have made 272 full direct communications, 226 have been law enforcement-only direct communications. This slide shows just the progress year-to-date. So not looking at the beginning of the strategy, but starting in January of this year and moving forward. You can see, when you look across our four districts, we track referral response time and time before enrollment. We want to make sure that those numbers are quick, that when we make a referral, they can be quickly connected to services, and we're seeing that happen and that time be decreased. All right. This slide looks at GVRS incidents and enforcement activity. Here, we have noted 508 group member-involved incidents. You'll see that as we prepare for scale in the Southern District, we are tracking Southern District incidents. Six active investigations, this is not a cumulative number, but represents where we are today from an investigation perspective. And then there have been 340 GVRS-related arrests, with 265 of those being GBU arrests. I want to invite BPD to say anything about this slide, if you want, around GVRS, or anything here. Okay. All right. This shows the breakdown of our GVRS participants, where our direct communications lead to enrollment in services, broken down by district. So you can see Yap, who takes the bulk of our participants, they have 139 participants across our districts. ROKA has 54. As a reminder, ROKA takes our 16 to 24 young men, who are a part of the strategy, for a total of 193 participants, who we've connected to those intensive life coaching and other wraparound services. And then this is the same information, but just looking at 2024 year-to-date. This slide is important. It shows for that group of 193 participants who have been connected to intensive life coaching services. It is tracking how well we're doing at the goals of the strategy, keeping individuals safe, alive, and free. Two of the ways that we track our progress towards that is tracking revictimization of our participants, and also reoffense. When we look at reoffense here, that doesn't mean any kind of offense, we're really looking at arrests due to crimes of violence in particular. What we're seeing is that over 93% of our GVRS participants are not being revictimized, they're not recidivating, and again, we're working with those individuals who are at the highest risk for involvement in gun violence. And this is since the start of the strategy in 2022. I'll go through the next few slides quickly, but I know there's been a lot of discussion about our agency, the work of GVRS, other work that is core to our portfolio in this comprehensive strategy. Given the fact that ARPA funding allowed us in large part to initiate the strategy and to ensure we had the staffing to deliver to the current level of service that we have. At present, the agency has 43 positions, with 41 of those currently being staffed. We are recruiting right now for two key roles, Community Engagement and Opportunity Deputy Chief, as well as a Community Violence Intervention Operations Manager. The Chief of Staff and I have taken some time over the past quarter, thinking about the organizational structure we need to continue to deliver this work for the long haul. And so as part of that, we have been doing the work of post-ARPA planning. Through other grant sources and general fund dollars, we've already begun that work of transitioning positions to a secure funding source. So 10 of our positions by January 1st will already be kind of on their secure funding source, and we have sufficient ARPA funds to carry our remaining seven ARPA-funded staff through the end of the fiscal year. We're actively working with the Budget Office now to ensure we can sustain that staffing as we move forward. Now, the cost of GVRS, just to do a deep dive into that, we estimate it at around $3.65 million a year to provide the level of services that we've been providing. This includes the service provision with youth advocate programs and ROKA doing the intensive life coaching, providing participant stipends, other referrals, wraparound supports. This also covers the stipends that we give our community moral voice partners when they deliver custom notifications with us, when they are a part of that process. That's something that we also bring to them. This includes our technical assistance, which has been with the University of Pennsylvania team, and also our MONZI staff. And so this is, this is sort of the rough estimate, and I'll dive in right here. When we think about GVRS sustainability, we're in a good place and working towards being fully secured here. So Yap's contract is one that is funded by ARPA. That's one that will be extended through 2025. We're confident that we have sufficient savings in that contract, given the pace of scale to extend it. ROKA gets an annual appropriation from MONZI, and so that's a part of this work that is locked in, so to speak. We have funding through fiscal year '25 to support the community moral voice work. Our GVRS team is secured in the general fund, and we're working on an extension, a no-cost extension right now, with the University of Pennsylvania team to extend that contract through March 25th. One of the things they're really helping us think through right now is how we bring alignment between our Community Violence Intervention work and GVRS as a strategy. And so this just speaks again to the staffing. The Mayor granted us an enhancement investment at the start of the budget cycle to sustain two of our GVRS positions, and MONZI received supplemental funding for the remainder of that GVRS team. So again, that team is locked in. Transitional employment is another aspect of this work that plays a big role in GVRS. We've appointed $3.6 million of ARPA in partnership with Mayor's Office of Employment Development and the Department of Planning around part-time and full-time transitional employment opportunities. So for our GVRS participants, for returning citizens, other participants in our CBI ecosystem, this is work that will be operating with ARPA funds through the 2025 calendar year, and will continue to seek sustaining funding for that work longer term. And then two other parts of the work, which we don't always think is connected to GVRS, but I would say GVRS as a strategy would not be as effective as it is without coordinated, integrated victim services, as well as our community engagement and coordinated Neighborhood Stabilization Response work that the Deputy Chief just spoke to. So again, funding, we're in a good place through 2025. We've worked to supplement, in part, our internal victim services fund. This is work we carry out in partnership with Police Department and State's Attorney's Office Victim Services Teams. And then ARPA funding also supports continued maintenance supplies with the Peace Mobile. So as we think about where we go from here, we're continuing in partnership with the Police Department and State's Attorney's Office, planning towards Southern District expansion and the plan for continued scale, continuing to track our KPIs, doing some of the administrative work to make sure our staff and strategy is locked in, and beginning the work of contracting. I think this may be our last slide, so happy from here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I want to say a couple of things. It's, again, refreshing to see where we are through the end of this year. I think we continue to make significant progress on nearly every front, and, you know, as we continue to push ourselves to do better, I'm glad to see that we're thinking about how to make some of these programs sustainable, and how we're kind of untying some of the difficult pain points that we've been having in enforcement and accountability. I have a number, I have a whole lot of questions, as usual. What I'll try to do is toss out a couple before I hand off to my colleagues, who may have questions themselves. So first, I want to note, and I appreciate the progress that we've made on our clearance rates. I believe that is, one, probably a matter of seeing a significant reduction in homicides and shootings across the city. But I also think seeing that rate steadily go up over time does wonders to the accountability for folks that are partaking in violence today. When people believe that they will get caught, they are far less likely to perpetuate violence upon each other. So seeing that homicide rate to, to get to 68%, very clearly overcoming the national average, is really, really, really good, and I'm glad to see that progress. Same thing goes for shootings, to see that, you know, near 50%, we're 42%. I hope we can sustain these numbers through the end of the year, but it's really, really good to see. I have questions about rape, and I know we talked about it in the last hearing. I know we saw a couple of things happening there. I'm curious, what are we seeing around rapes? What can we do, given these, there are not nearly as many rapes as some of these other more violent crimes, but certainly these are far more personal crimes here, and whatever we can do to address these, I would imagine the department is doing. I'm just curious, you know, what we can do to bring up that clearance rate as well. I would love to see some additional progress there. So we'll start there.
I'll actually turn over to Lieutenant Colonel Holman.
Good afternoon, everyone. Lieutenant Colonel Steve Holman, Deputy Chief of Detectives. Yeah, so the rape clearance rates are, you know, for lack of a better term, very nuanced. The, it's really easy to kind of calculate the homicide clearance rate versus, you know, everything that goes into the rape clearance rate. Part of, you know, what we're seeing with the numbers this year has to do with the way that NiBRS versus UCR counts them. So not only does that kind of affect the overall reported number, it also kind of affects how they're cleared as well. So, you know, for example, you could have a, a single incident with a single victim with multiple offenses, right? So the way that that's counted is that it's really like, if it's two offenses, one victim, it's really counted as two. But when you clear it, it counts as one, if that makes sense. So that throws the number off a little bit. I wish I could explain and make that make sense to you, but that's just the way that the NiBRS-
So you would not clear for each offense if you've made an arrest?
You clear the incident, not necessarily the offense, if that makes sense. I know it doesn't, but, yeah.
It doesn't.
That, that's the way NiBRS has categorized rape. That said, beginning in 2025, we're kind of going to go back to the way, the old way of counting the numbers. So I think you'll see a little bit of a more accurate clearance rate with that. The other thing with rape clearances, there are a number of cases that have met the threshold of probable cause, right? So, you know, detectives could go get an arrest warrant because it's met the threshold. However, they're not necessarily prosecutable cases. They're not cases that can be proven beyond a reasonable doubt, right? So essentially, those cases are solved, they just don't get cleared because they're not charged, if that makes sense. So that also throws the number off a little bit, and there's a number of those cases this year. So like, if you were the- However, they're, they're not necessarily prosecutable cases. They're not cases that can be proven beyond a reasonable doubt, right? So essentially, those cases are solved. They just don't get cleared because they're not charged, if that makes sense. So that also throws the number off a little bit, and there's a number of those cases this year. So like if you were to count those cases, we would be well above the national average in rape clearance.
So let me understand what you're saying here. You're saying there are some cases for which we can't make an arrest, but we know enough to?
They're just not prosecutable cases.
They're not prosecutable cases.
You know, and not to get too far into detail and graphic about it.
We don't need to, I think.
You know, this, the, you may have a child rape victim. And for very good reasons, the state's attorney may decide not to put that child on the stand, right? And that may be the only witness and the only evidence to that case. So for the purposes of the investigation, it's solved, right? There's probable cause because the victim survivor slash witness says this is who did it. But the state's attorney has made a decision not to prosecute that case, and for justifiable reasons. So for the purposes of like the clearance rate, that doesn't count as a clearance.
Forgive my ignorance here. Does, do we clear a case once we make an arrest, or once the state's attorney decides that they're going to prosecute?
So there's two ways to do it, right? Essentially, there's cleared by arrest, which is, you know, what everybody kind of believes is put handcuffs on somebody, charge them, that's cleared by arrest. There's a cleared by exception, which are cases that essentially the suspect's passed away. So you're obviously not going to charge a suspect that's passed away. A suspect has fled to another country that's non-extradition, not going to be able to charge that case. So the vast majority of the cases are cleared by arrest, but there's a smaller category that are cleared by exception. Sometimes we also exceptionally clear cases if, for example, they are charged in an overall kind of a, like Rico-style indictment, where they're, were charged, you know, as a group, multiple cases at a time, will exceptionally clear those that way as well.
Right, but if the state's attorney decides not to prosecute despite the fact that we've made an arrest, that shouldn't have any bearing on the clearance, should it?
Yes and no. So there is a school of thought that you can exceptionally clear those cases because they are declined to prosecute.
Right.
Essentially, it's a declination. You know, we are working through whether or not we're, you know, going to categorize those as exceptional clearances.
So we don't necessarily do that?
We don't do that.
Got it.
And it's kind of a mixed bag. Some departments do, some departments don't. Most of the larger departments, based on, you know, who I've talked to, you know, kind of around the country, do not clear those type of cases. And YPD, for example, doesn't do the, you know, clearances for non-prosecutable cases.
I'll ask a more broad and general question that maybe you can or cannot answer. Does, how do you feel generally about where we are with the clearances around rapes? Is this? Is there an issue that we should be looking to resolve here? Or do you think we are in a decent place? Of course, always with room for improvement, but in a decent place for which we can manage what we have?
No, I think we are. I think we're in a very good place. I think that, you know, we've recently gone through a slight reorganization within the special investigation section. We've kind of consolidated all of the sex crimes under one command, one lieutenant, for multiple reasons. I think continuity and kind of standardization of investigation. Obviously, in terms of like criminal investigations, the consent decree touches sex offense the most. So to kind of help us, you know, with compliance with that, you know, kind of make things more uniform. And the lieutenant that's overseeing that is really, really good, been doing it for a really long time. So I think that is going to help a little bit. You know, I'd like to see it a bit higher than where we are, but I think some of those other outside factors, particularly with like the NIBR's, and I know it's kind of semantics when we're talking about how it's counted, right?
Sure.
But I think that's going to, you know, help with it a little bit. And truthfully, working through a lot of the backlog of these decline cases with the state's attorney's office, you know, because they've onboarded new leadership, you know, obviously new administration there. So working through that, they've been extremely helpful. You know, really, there were a lot of cases just sitting in limbo with no decision, but they've worked through that backlog very well.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
I will say, Councilman, just for me, you know, having the overall operations of the unit, I think the reorg is making a bigger change for accountability. I will say that there is a four-prong factor in reference to the oversight of case management. I think through their own CIB stat, the reorg made a difference. I think we are addressing any kind of ongoing and old cases in reference to comstat as another format. But daily on our crime calls, any of, within the 24-hour period, any sexual assault that has been brought up in the district, it's, it gets addressed on the crime call. So then that gives the opportunity of the detective unit, as well as that patrol district, to be aware of if this is someone that is known or unknown to the victim, and then what we need to put in place in reference to being proactively out there. So I'm very confident where we are in reference to our sexual assault investigations.
I appreciate it. Thank you. The other question, I wanted to ask about robberies. So we saw a, we saw an increase in arrests around robberies. And this is a multifaceted question, I think realizing some of the recurring issues that we've been seeing around young folks. I'm curious, what's going with robberies? What does the interplay with young folks in some of the robberies you've seen across the city have in the trends that we're seeing? And how are we broadly handling that issue?
Yeah, so I'll start and then I'll pass it off to Colonel Herzog. So, you know, robberies has been a focus of this agency since the beginning of the year. We've had ebbs and flows in reference to the spikes in them, the different trends. Looking at victimology and suspectology, we've realized that, you know, more times than not, we've broken down the high days, the high times, redeploying our units, ensuring that there are protocols in place, either through carjacking or the robbery protocol, that once the incident is occurring, suspect information as well as involved vehicles are broadcast citywide, so we can start to do concentric circles of where the potential victim's vehicle or the suspect's car, caravan vehicles will be. I will say, our citywide robbery unit is pretty good and excellent in identifying our patterns. As soon as we develop a pattern, it is something through DD, the district detective stat that they're tracking. These are constant calls and their own comstat-like process, where they go over with the districts exactly where the problems are and how to redeploy. This is something not only that is focused by the DDU units in citywide robbery, but each district is then responsible then for their proactivity into those areas that they need to be deployed. And under the helm of Colonel Thacker with the non-patrol support systems from SWAT and K9.
Deputy Commissioner, if I could interrupt you. I think I'll try to be a little more specific about where my head is here. I'm looking at the clearance rates. The clearance rates are right around national average, a little bit above national average. Seems we are catching folks at a rate that is somewhat reasonable. And, but there was something that I think the commissioner said, which actually jumped out to me. I wrote it down, and he said that with the robberies, it's young people robbing young people. Are we seeing that as a trend? And if so, when, where? And, you know, when I think about young people, I tend to think about, we have a number of systems or interventions, whether it be schools, after-school programs, parents, adults, any number of things for which we do have tabs on young people, if that is the trend. And so I asked a question, kind of with that in mind.
No, so it is. It's just that. So yes, we do have a higher number of juvenile and juvenile crimes. With that, unfortunately, there comes the inherent problem of the ability to interview juveniles with suspects. So that is one layer of a problem that we're also addressing, that we're working with Chief Reynolds in reference to addressing that. Majority of these robberies unfortunately are on the street. They're occurring primarily during the week. The two high days that we're seeing is 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, as well as 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. We realize that there was an issue around the Inner Harbor. There was an issue around Patterson Park. We have some issues around bus stops and the footprint of some schools. Ace Academy, Digital Harbor, Edmondson, Mariville. Mainly what we've seen is cell phones and watches are being taken. We've identified habitual recidivist individuals that we're focusing and working with DJAS to address. But I'll kick it to Lieutenant Colonel Herzog for any additional.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good afternoon. So I think one thing that we did unique this year, which is one of the big reasons for our success, is so when we reorganized the citywide investigation division, we included an enforcement component to that. And so we moved our mobile metro unit under that division. We also moved our regional auto theft task force under that division, and we created a citywide enforcement team that falls within that division. And so now what we do, when we recognize a pattern early on, we can, in real time, with communication from the investigator to the enforcement teams, relay that information right to them. So we're able to rapidly deploy those resources to put those patterns down. When we started that this year, my goal specifically was, you know, not to have those patterns that we saw in the past where there were 40, 50, 60, and even in some cases, 80 cases that were part of a pattern. That, I wanted to keep it to 10 or less cases before we were able to, what I would refer to as bust a pattern. One of the problems that we've seen this year is with the juveniles. So when they're committing several cases in one night or over a period of time, we'll arrest them, they'll go down to juvenile booking, they'll get released right back out, and then that pattern will continue. So they, that kind of does a couple of things. It makes it really difficult to recognize a pattern, right? Because when you think that you take the pattern down, but then it continues, you're like, all right, we didn't get the right person. But through GPS and through investigations and through working with partners, we've been able to kind of identify that. So what we do is we leave those patterns on our pattern list. And that allows us to continue working them. And I think we've seen a lot of recent success through some of the change in some of the policy at DJAS with putting these juveniles on monitoring. But overall, really pleased with the success that we've had with citywide robbery, a lot of the coordination that we have with our DDUs. And I hope that we can continue that into 2025.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think, Deputy, when you were explaining the sort of time periods, and it's funny because we had this hearing in this committee, I think it was, as a follow-up to BPD, we were talking about kids going to and from school. And you explained 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, which is right around that period that kids are to and from school. And then 3:00 to 5:00 PM, also that period as kids get out of school. And you're talking about cell phones and watches, things that pretty much every kid that goes to school has. And so, you know, it says a lot about, you know, what we may be experiencing, or what our young people may be experiencing, you know, going to and from school. We do have a program, I think that sits under Monty, that does help in that regard. And is of course rolling out in a couple of schools, making sure kids can get to and from safely. But I do think, as we think about solutions here and preventative options, we should be, of course, thinking about those components. It sounds like kids robbing kids, and we all went to school, and we all got, well, I got robbed. You know, so we want to make sure we can, you know, whatever it takes. And if there is coordination with school police that's necessary, I certainly would, you know, when you're thinking about those patterns and maybe partners that can help you with preventing those patterns from continuing to perpetuate, you know, we should be thinking about it from that perspective, too.
I'm sorry, Jack. Yeah, so we're on that. So, you know, we're working closely with Chief Shorten School Police, closer than we have ever had before. I will say that I just received an email earlier today from Mayor's Office of Children, Family and Safety in reference to the Safe Passage Program that they're having.
That's right.
I believe they were having a ceremony today. I wasn't able to make that. But, you know, we're working with Dr. Brooks in that. We're well aware of Safe Passage. The districts are well aware and engaged in that as well. So it is something that we're holistically doing in reference to, not only looking at the trauma, we're looking at the suspects, but also the trauma that is associated with the victims.
Right.
Because it goes from the street back into the school to somewhere else. Because then that once victim now becomes an on-person themselves, and the potential for it pushing forward. So we're well aware of that, the trauma and the unintended, you know, the unintended consequences that come from now being a victim. So working with the school systems, I'll push it to just seniors as well as the very young, the very old. Director Chardelle Rose and our victim services unit are finding more and more ways that they can intervene and assist in these situations with our victims, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's interesting. I'm looking at the youth violence over year. With robberies, we see robberies are up 44% and carjackings are up 233%. Yeah, it's an interesting, interesting issue we're seeing around young people in that area. And of course, as we continue to untangle what's going on there, you know, appreciate you guys continuing to work on it. One of the things I also noted around juveniles was the increase in the numbers of arrests. And I'm curious if that has to do with some of the rearrest issue that we're seeing. And this was on, I can't remember the number of the slide, it's not listed here, but this is the juvenile arrest slide. Juvenile arrests in Axon Records. And the year-over-year shows a 422% increase from 769 to 1191, about a 54% increase. And I'm, you know, when we're talking about the rearrest issue, this is an issue that I think we've talked about a lot. And it makes me wonder if we're seeing a lot of rearrest. If so, why, under what circumstances are they happening? And then whatever we can do with our partners at DJAS or otherwise to not have these kids continue to make the same mistakes time and time again. I think it's a really important problem for us because it uses a lot of our resources. So, if there's anything you want to add there?
No, I think you're spot on with that. I think it's going to be a hybrid between, we are arresting some of the same individuals multiple times. We've had, we've reported on arresting an individual, them getting out and then within hours being rearrested for another offense. So yes, we're aware of that. We're also combating the issue where it's something where it is a badge of honor sometimes among juveniles, where they have these incidents and then they broadcast it on social media. So then it becomes almost a faddish type thing. But I do understand that. I'll pass it to either Jack or Lisa in reference to what we're seeing.
Yeah, but I think, just one more thing to add. I think a lot of times in terms of stolen autos and our carjackings, we're making the arrests several times for these youth in stolen autos. And because they're picked up in a carjacked vehicle, doesn't mean that we can automatically charge them with the carjacking. So in a lot of instances, we're arresting them, charging them with stealing the car, because that was previously, you know, it was considered a nonviolent offense, even though it's a carjacked vehicle. They're, you know, it's basically a walkthrough, or they're released to their parents. And so we see a lot of that with especially these carjacking recidivists, where we're also arresting them for a lot of stolen autos as well.
Can you help me understand that? So how, so it's showing as car theft, not a carjacking?
No, so what I mean is, so let's say, you know, a vehicle gets carjacked.
Right.
And then, you know, a few days later, that juvenile will get picked up, will get pulled over in that vehicle and get arrested. It's very difficult because of that time lapse without a victim identification or some other evidence to say that they were the one that actually did the carjacking. But because they're in the stolen auto, we're able to charge specifically for that crime. And so we're doing that over and over and over again with the same youth, over and over.
Right, and I know now with the state legislation that passed, and I believe went live in October, the end of October, November 1st. Oh, so it just went live 13 days ago. We can, we can now, in certain instances, detain young people who have committed a car theft, particularly because of this reason. Sometimes they are carjackings, but even if not, if you see repeated car thefts, that may be a red flag that this young person needs a little bit more attention than to just let them out and let them go home.
Yes, and that's correct. And the other thing that we're doing a lot of now, and Lisa touched on this with like the tracking and just our ability to kind of see the numbers. And so we're able to put in recommendations to DJAS to see if we're recommending a detention. And so in that instance, even though it's a stolen auto, we would recommend a detention for that. Doesn't mean they'll follow that, but we would recommend that. We're able to track.
Now, I know we're just 13 days in. I mean, how has that worked out thus far? Has it helped? Has it changed behavior? Are you not necessarily seeing the same young people who've been involved with multiple car thefts?
I think it's too early to tell. I would say anecdotally, things feel as if they're getting better. And I don't know if that's because of the shift in DJAS's policy. But I would say recently, over the past month, it seems as if we're having a lot more success having the juveniles held or at least placed on monitoring.
Okay, yeah, we'll definitely continue to keep an eye on. Okay, yeah, we'll definitely continue to keep an eye on that issue. I hope, I hope, hope, hope that that policy change has, um, helped. And, you know, I think there's a lot to be said about what happens to that young person now that they may be detained for a car theft. What support are they receiving? Is it sufficient for the problem that they're clearly having? Um, Councilwoman, you have it?
I just wanted to add to it that, um, I think, uh, Mr. Chair, you're on these emails. We're supposed, you and I are supposed to be meeting with DJS fairly soon about this, um, because this is something that's such a big deal in our districts and want to have an opportunity to talk with them directly. Um, with our, with our delegation, they're going to be a part of the meeting. So just to kind of put on record that this is an issue that's really important to all of us. Um, and, and not necessarily to just arrest all the young people. I do not want to do that. What I want to do is make sure that they are getting the resources and interventions that they need to ensure that they're not going to do this again. Um, there is obviously something happening in the home or in the neighborhood or something that leads them to this. Uh, and, and so it's important to, I think, approach it in a much different way, and I'm hoping that we, you know, together can, can work on that. I think that's going to be, um, extremely important moving forward. Um, in my district, some of the problems have resolved themselves, um, in a different way. But, uh, I think we still need to, um, you know, be diligent about it. So just, just putting that on record that we have taken some consideration in our meeting with DJS directly, too. Thanks.
Yeah, and I, I want to re-echo exactly what you said. I think, um, you know, no one is necessarily saying that we want to arrest and detain young people necessarily. But, um, I think we also appreciate, um, and you alluded to it, there, having young people continue to do this can ultimately be really, really bad for them in, in ways that we don't want to see. Um, and it's better to detain them in some instances. And, um, I, I'm really curious, and you probably don't have this data on hand, but, um, I'm curious, you know, how small is that subset of young people that, um, are rearrested time and time again? I, I would imagine it's a pretty small subset, maybe a, a couple of dozen at best, um, or maybe more than that. Nevertheless, um, if we are able to have a, a sufficient response, um, given the needs of that young person, um, you know, it would address hopefully the safety concerns that they're dealing with as well. So, um, no, I appreciate the point, Councilwoman. Oh, did you, any, any questions you want to add to? Um, before I move on to Monty, because I have questions and, um, comments on Monty's presentation as well, I, I wanted to jump to, um, the assessment paragraphs, um, on page, on slide fourteen, around where we are with the implementation of the consent decree. Um, and I was curious, there are a couple for which we had not assessed, or at least we hadn't begun, um, those efforts. This is, uh, I think slide fourteen. I missed that one. This one, yes. Oh, twelve. Um, so here I noted that, um, the ones with the red, they stood out, the red, the red and yellow ones, particularly, um, thirteen and fourteen supervision and misconduct investigations and discipline. There are a couple of things we had not assessed nor started. I'm curious, um, what those things are, um, if there's any good reason why we haven't assessed or started those pieces, and what that may mean to, um, generally how we're dealing with misconduct or supervision, uh, under the consent decree, if anyone can speak to that.
Yeah, yeah, but basically what those are, i- if, if it's something that's not yet assessed, and that means we haven't got to the point, either we haven't implemented anything to even start the process, or some of the other phases have to, are precursors to getting to that point.
I see.
Um, the biggest thing with, with, with PIB, Public Integrity Bureau Investigations, that we, we have the hurdle on is the amount of time that it takes to complete an investigation. Um, the goal is ninety days. And, and some of them, you just can't get ninety days. For example, if we have a, a case where we have a police-involved shooting, um, the case doesn't even start to get investigated until the, until the, pretty much until the declination letter, or we get something from the Attorney General, or, um, if there's a, an arrest, if an officer's arrested, we don't even start our investigation in public integrity until the court case is done. So those are some things that delay it, but for the most part, I think we were a hundred and thirty-one days at the last consent decree. But most of the stuff that's not assessed are either administrative paragraphs or something that we just haven't got to that point yet where we can even start to assess them.
Okay, yeah, I'd, I'd just be very curious because, um, we hadn't started or, uh, it's not assessed, just what those things are. Um, i- i- if you could just send a reply, um, uh, update to the committee, just what those things are, just for our own edification. I think it'd be helpful to know. Um, i- it very well could be that you'd have to complete certain things in order to even think about starting these next things. Nevertheless, I think it's important for us to understand what those pieces are.
Yes, sir.
Um, thank you. Um. All right, I'm going to move on to Monty, um, Director. Appreciate the presentation. I, I want to say, you know, it's also great news to see the continued progress that we've been making with GPRS and with Safe Streets. Uh, congratulations. I understand, um, there was a, um, a press conference yesterday. I couldn't make it, I'm sorry. Um, congratulations on the three hundred and sixty-five days. I, Councilwoman Porter was here, but she, she had to leave as well. Uh, congratulations to her as well in the Brooklyn, um, area. So, um, I think, I, I appreciated a couple of things, a, a couple of things jumped out to me as you were presenting. Um, I noted the timeline for GPRS has now pushed us into twenty-six. Just, I was curious. Um, is that correct? Am I turn- um, this is on the, one, two, three, four, five, six, on the sixth slide, this one? You can see that one.
Oh.
Yeah. Um, in fiscal year twenty-six, it says responsibly scale GPRS city, citywide. Um, I asked because, um, I, I do believe my district is going to be like last on that list. And so I'm, I'm curious what the plan is there and, um, what we might expect by way of expansion.
Sure. Um, I think just to start off by saying, you know, we intentionally took the route that we took for GPRS expansion, starting with the Western Districts. We knew that was where the depth of our challenges with group violence, um, were, um, and are, and why it's so important that as we scale, we continue to maintain the ground that we've had. Um, I mentioned that we're doing actively the work right now, preparing for expansion to the Southern District, and we see the Southern District as, um, our last big jump for the strategy. Once we get to the Southern District and we're thinking about how to scale citywide and what that engagement looks like, when we're thinking about the, the four remaining districts not having, um, the same kind of proportion of group violence, um, we need to identify what that looks like. An expansion to like Northeast or Northern is going to look a little different than what it took for us to get from the Central to the Eastern, for example. Um, so that's something that we're actively in conversation with BPD around, our technical advisors. Um, for us, we're doing everything we can right now to take an active posture towards scale. So I mentioned that, um, we're beginning to look at those Southern District incidents. We've already seen, um, as we continue to cover more of the city connectivity to other districts that we may not be fully activated in, but it's certainly taking our attention into some of those districts. Um, so we'll continue to provide those updates. I will share where is his, you know, it's fiscal year twenty-six. So when we're thinking about being citywide by the time we get to fiscal twenty-six, it doesn't mean you're not going to see progress, um, until next summer. But that does mean when we're looking at something that we can say we've accomplished as a city in that maintenance year, um, I would want to set our mark on saying GPRS is citywide. We know that there's some challenges we need to continue to step through and make sure we have both the resources necessary, but also, um, we're not scaling just to say we've scaled and then we see parts of the strategy fall apart. We're, we're really proud of how far we've been able to continue to sustain the strategy. Um, but we know it's a, it's a fragile moment in the sense that we have to stay the course. I mean, the mayor's been very clear that it's our purpose and mission to stay the course.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I, I actually agree a hundred percent with you. Um, I think as, I know there are groups within my districts, not as many as, um, maybe in other districts. Um, nevertheless, I know, um, I had a conversation with some community leaders in my district that are eagerly awaiting GPRS. Um, so I, you know, I, I ask that question because it intimately involves, uh, the North and Northeast. Uh, I expect that will be our last, uh, two districts, uh, that will get GPRS. And so, um, understanding what that timeline looks like is of course important to me, so.
So if I can, sir, just to, to give you a little ease.
Uh, you, can you pu- push it in? Push the, there we go.
Wow. Yep, just to give you a little ease in reference to that. So this is something that, you know, w- w- we understand is a, a one for everyone. Um, we see that there is, the GPRS model has shown success. Um, what we have done is each and every district is expected to follow the GPRS model when it comes to violence. Each and every district commander and their intel officers are, are asked to come to the GPRS meetings, to see how the violence reduction meetings go, to identify the group member involved incidents. So what happens is even though it may be something that is not a, one of the four GPRS districts, they still have the ability through, uh, Colonel Velti and his team to adopt certain things and to take certain models in reference to how we're going to address this group. So we're looking for this citywide approach that although it may not be in all of the districts, each and every district, even on our crime calls and in comms, that once we identify something as group member involved, it's given the same rating and attention as if it was a GPRS district. And we try to troubleshoot the best way of trying to address and extract that organization.
Yeah, yeah, I think, um, and that's helpful because I've had similar conversation with the major in the Northeast, Northern and Northeastern. Um, and they said exactly what you said, that they're already starting to do some of this stuff. Um, and I think a lot of the intelligence and insight on the groups that operate within the district already exists. Um, that said, um, the ability to leverage some of the support services to defer those folks into more productive lanes is not necessarily open to, uh, those folks. Uh, there are lanes, um, they're just not as wide open. Um, so I'm just keeping that, that peace in mind. I, you know, I, I know we're, we're doing everything we can to expand, and then, you know, I got to fight for my district, that's all. Um, all right, and then, um, there were a couple of things. And, um, Councilman Glover, I don't know if you have any questions. Okay, wonderful. Um, Director, you talked a little bit about, um, the sustainability piece for, um, some of the ARPA-funded programs that we have at the moment. I appreciate you walking through all those pieces. Um, it, it sounds like we have a plan. Uh, when I was looking through the, the slide, so there are forty-three positions. We're transitioning ten to, um, to the general fund. Seven will continue on ARPA until, until we figure out what to do with those, uh, what will happen to the remaining positions.
So all of our, um, with the transfer of those ten positions by January first to either the general fund or other grant sources, um, the seven remaining positions on ARPA, I mentioned that salary, um, will carry through the end of the fiscal year. We're working right now with BBMR. Our expectation is that we'll be building in those remaining positions. Um, and through the ARPA process, we've already made some determinations about, um, positions that we may have had in the organizational structure at one point in time that are no longer necessary to carry forward. So this is really, those seventeen positions that were priority for us to plan and transition, um, are the ones referred to in the presentation. And I think from a staffing perspective, I'm confident that we will have the staffing that we need. Um, we've been deep in the analysis, deep in the budget, um, and really trying to assess what we need to make sure we can continue to deliver this current level of service, um, at the level that we've set expectations.
So you believe that this, the seventeen is like what you know you need?
And those are just ARPA-funded positions. Of course, coming into, um, you know, even prior to ARPA, we have other positions funded by other grant sources that never touched ARPA, um, both prior to the ARPA investment and after. Um, we also had kind of a core set of general funds positions, which is what you'll see in the budget book. Um, so as we move into fiscal twen- well, continue moving through fiscal twenty-five, and definitely by the fiscal twenty-six budget season, I would expect that, um, you'll see a more accurate reflection in the budget book of our true staffing.
Okay, yeah, um, cause, so, uh, to try to nail it down, out of the forty-three positions, what? And maybe this is not, I, maybe, I won't, I won't ask that question because maybe you can or can't answer that yet. Um, but my thought is, you know, how many will we see at the end of twenty-six when we no longer have ARPA? How many do we intend to keep after that point? You may or may not have that answer. I don't want to pressure you into.
I would say, I mean, forty-three, I, I would say is our sweet spot right now, um, in terms of the positions that are on our org chart, what we need at a base level, um, maybe plus or minus one or two. But at this point, we've been really intentional about the positions we intend to carry forward, um, and where we're able to, um, you know, identify efficiencies so that the positions we truly need, like for example, this calendar year, we added a, um, a finance operations coordinator position. It's been a really critical one to make sure that we have, um, a key point of connection between our grantees and our finance team and the financial systems in the city. Um, this has been a major year for us thinking about sustainability, and I'll say that, you know, pretty much since the time the ARPA dollars dropped, um, we have both been thinking about and forced to think about what comes after. So the planning's been long underway. Uh, but, you know, it's important to mention our inter-agency agreement with the Recovery Office goes through the end of next calendar year. Um, so while we're kind of locking in our budget to take us through there, we still have this sort of additional year to, to spend.
I see. So, um, uh, then more pointed, do, it doesn't sound like we plan on making any significant cuts. It sounds like we're going to try to find funding sources philanthropic or, um, you know, other governments and state or otherwise.
That, we're being really active when it comes to soliciting state, federal grants, um, working where we can with community-based providers, others. Um, so we're going to continue to look for those grant sources. Like, we're grateful that the mayor's made investments already to make sure we, we can sustain GPRS. We appreciate, um, especially in the community violence intervention space, we know that there are state appropriations to support things like Safe Streets. Um, but where we anticipate having a gap, particularly when we're thinking about that direct support to community-based organizations we may have funded earlier in the term, that may be one of those areas where, um, we need to partner more actively, um, both with our philanthropic community, but also directly with some of our community-based providers. Um, those are conversations that we're starting to have now. Um, but when we think about work that we're carrying forward in the remainder of our ARPA term, things like renewing our hospital violence intervention program contracts, which we've made for the past two years, that's something with the remainder of our ARPA allocation, um, we're preparing to make now. So that'll kind of carry us through. Um, then we'll kind of be back to the table with our partners to figure out how we sustain this long-term. Um, of course, with the federal picture, I think some remains to be seen about what the level of resourcing is going to be. But, um, we're trying to be creative right now to make sure we can sustain as much of this as possible. But everything you saw on that screen, I would say those are the essential building blocks that we'll want to make sure, from a what makes this work successful perspective, that we want to carry forward.
Yeah, I'm, I would be very curious, um, what, what the federal pot looks like that we're currently receiving. Um, and not to say that that'll necessarily completely be cut, but, um, just being conservative in our estimates on what that may look like for the city so that we can brace ourselves for what may or may not come. Um, and, you know, I think you answered my question. It was, my next question is like, what, what will we have to cut, um, once we lost the ARPA funding? Or once we have expended or, um, the threshold to spend has ended? Um, and it sounds like it's, it's within those partnerships and relationships that we've been funding briefly.
We, we made a number of one-time awards, maybe for a year or so. Um, there's some partners who, uh, we maybe made a two- or three-year award. So I, I think that's the area where right now we don't, ARPA was essentially able to supplement those funds that we otherwise had. Um, without ARPA, that will be a gap. Um, but I think one of the things we're grateful for, especially earlier in the term, is we made lots of awards to organizations who maybe never had city funds before. We now see them on the basis of the work they completed on that original grant with us. They've been able to solicit and receive other awards, really accent the partnership that they have with the city. Um, we want to continue to be a part of that, but I think for us, it's about having those conversations now with the, with the partners. And then, um, hopefully there being, you know, federal resources, continued state partnership, which we know is really crucial, um, and continuing to work with our philanthropic community, which I know is deeply invested in making sure that, you know, all of these strategies can continue, and we have an unprecedented opportunity, given the second term, um, of the mayor to lock in this work. So that's our, that's our goal. That's my focus.
Awesome. I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, I am fresh out of questions for now, or at least these questions. Uh, Councilman, do you have anything you'd like to add or questions?
I just want to kind of just piggyback on some things that were said early on. I do want to give, um, kudos to, uh, the Boston Police Department and to Monty because, um, I've seen a dramatic, um, change in my district. Um, and even the communication between both agencies, um, I've seen that drastically, uh, go up higher as well. Um, when I reach out to Monty, Mark, you know, Rick, those guys, Taz, they're, they're always there to help. Um, Commissioner. Commissioner and Commissioner, you know, they phones all day every day. They're answering and they're there to help. The only thing I do want to add is that in the southeast part of our district, which is like the Patterson Park area. We have seen a dramatic increase in juvenile, like robberies and things of the nature over there. So I don't know if there's extra police patrolling that we need over there in that part of the district, but we really need to put our hands over there in that part of the district. There are a lot of seniors that are jogging, walking in the park that are getting robbed. And even individuals that have come home from work that are getting like carjacked and robbed. I just ask that we, you know, look closely over in the southeast part of the district. And I'll make some adjustments, some changes if we can, because it's a must. But other than that, thank both you guys, both your agencies for doing the great work that you guys are doing. And as long as you see, let's keep it up. We're moving in the right direction. So, thank you.
Yeah, I will echo my colleague's sentiments. It's good to see continued progress, you know. I will knock on wood, before and after, we may have fewer than two hundred homicides this year. You know, it's good to be a part of this. So I appreciate the hard work you guys are doing. It's certainly paying off on both sides, both BPD and Monsi, and you guys clearly work well together. One request I wanted to follow up on, and you let me know when is appropriate to get this. In the last meeting, we requested a plan, a strategy, something that let us know about what we would do around open-air drug markets. I have a couple of spots in my district that have just been really, really rough. And literally as long as I've been in office, they've continued to be an issue. And they've gotten worse. So I would love to hear what our thoughts would be for tackling these issues. Now, we certainly can't boil the ocean. We know we have issues across the entire city. But, you know, I'm curious how we think about tackling the issue. And I would love to hear what the thoughts are and if at all, you know, the opportunity to work with you guys on, you know, putting together some policies that make sense. It's one of the things that I constantly have complaints. It gets tough having to continue to walk throughs in my neighborhood and not really have the answers, so.
Yeah, appreciate the question, Mr. Chair. And obviously the opportunity to talk more about it with you. I think that that is something for the administration to have discussions with you about. And then where appropriate, we can loop in BPD.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, guys. This is our last meeting for the year. I will see you guys in the next term.